This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Wednesday, January 12th, 2022 meeting of the Tenino Planning Commission. Let the record show that all the commissioners are present, including our newest member, Dave Waterston. Welcome, Dave. In a minute, maybe you could give us a little brief introduction to yourself and tell us a little bit about, you know, what you've done with the city of Tenino.
A little bit. Glad to be, glad to be here. Something I've been doing for a while.
Nice. Good to have you. Okay, so I've been told by Jen that the minutes for the last meeting aren't ready, so this agenda is pretty brief tonight, so let's take a look at it and get an approval, and then we'll move on with the meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. That's what you're looking for?
That is.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, let's see. I noticed that we have a couple of members of the public. Do either of you or do any of you want to make a public comment at this time?
Yeah, I will. My name is Seth, and I just wanted to say thank you for all your guys' work, and I look forward with bated breath on the results for the city walkabout for the alleys and easements. So, thank you.
Can you tell us where you live? You live in town?
Yeah, I live on Park Avenue.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else? Any other public comment? Okay, the absence of additional comment, do we have any reports? Dan, do you know of anything from City Hall that we need to know?
I don't, I don't have anything, I mean, from City Hall. I've got a couple of things to brief the Planning Commission on later in the agenda.
Okay.
But I don't, I asked Kalene, I don't know if you all met the new city clerk, but she's about, what is it, like about five months in, six months in, Kalene? Yeah. Long enough to still be out there.
We can't hear you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Bummer. Okay, well, let's see. Do you want to go ahead and say what you want to say, Dan, or do you want me to have Dave give his introduction now?
Yeah, let's have Dave do stuff. I've got maybe like 15 minutes or so worth of presentation, and then I think maybe bounce over to the alleyway. I'll display those maps just for the public's purpose tonight.
That sounds good. Okay, Dave, I'd like to introduce you to Dave Waterston, man of our town. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Dave Waterston. I'm a retired firefighter. I worked in Lacey for 30 years, lived in Tenino since about 2000, well, in the 2003, March of 2003, I think I moved here. In my time here, I served on the city council for quite a few years, kind of been involved off and on with the Planning Commission coming to meetings and trying to be, you know, current on what's going on there. Something I'm very interested in. And after I resigned from the city council, I kind of wanted some time just to not be involved in city stuff for a while, but for a long time, I wanted to be more involved in the planning for the city. So Wayne finally bugged me enough that I turned my application in after having it sitting on my table for like four months, completed but not turned in, and was approved, I think, at the last city council meeting to serve. So that is nice, and I look forward to working with all of you. Some of my interests, I know Wayne said you guys have been talking a little bit about renewable energy things. This is a big interest of mine. I helped get the project on the school. I don't know if all of you have seen that. There's a pretty large solar system on the school. There's still another project with PSE that's supposed to be going. It's with COVID, it's been delayed, but a larger system at the substation there with some battery backup and some other things. It's probably like a $3 million project, I think they said, when it's all said and done. So that's one of my interests. My kind of, a couple of my other things are is how do we maintain our kind of community feel that allow for growth and traffic that comes with that. So that's kind of an interest of mine, and how do we help support people that may not be as fortunate to me to obtain housing and make sure we have housing that's as much as we can available for people, you know, on all the income scales that have safe and affordable housing. So those are a few of my interests that I would really like to delve into on my time on the, on the Planning Commission.
Excellent. Thank you, Dave. I'm glad to have you as a member of the team. I'm sure everybody else is too, so thank you.
I'm glad to be here.
Okay, Dan, I, there's nothing else on the agenda, so if you're ready.
Um, yeah, I just, I just dropped my internet, so I don't know if you, if I'm back now.
You are back.
Okay, so. I'm trying to block the family out of the wireless. Okay, so, um. I was trying to bring up real quickly here the, the streets and alleys, this map, just for the public's purpose. The two items that I, that I had for tonight was, one, to touch on that, and then the second item was to go over a few of the Housing Action Plan, the schedule, and, and get some input from the, the Planning Commission this evening. So I can do that in whichever order you wish.
Whichever is fine. Let's go for it.
All right. I have the housing stuff up first, so that is probably easier to get to.
Sounds good.
And I wonder if I can drop that in the chat. Does anyone know what the chat is on the GoToMeeting viewer?
Up in the top, right there.
Questions? They're all in there. No. Although, that's fun. All right, share my screen. I'm getting a bunch of feedback from somebody. Sorry. Okay, um, so I thought, so as you all know, just a little bit of context, as you know, the city was awarded Housing Action Plan grant from the Department of Commerce. We chatted a little bit about that this fall. Kalene and I are working through getting us under contract with Commerce, but we're going to start, they'll, they'll, ever since the award, they will, they will authorize this, start with, with the process. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about tonight, that the main, the main goal is I'm really interested in this, getting feedback on this section down here, which, if you can see that, it's the stakeholders. I'm hoping that the Planning Commission can give us, or give me some idea about who we should be reaching out to, to talk to on housing issues. So this is kind of an initial take on your input, and then I can give you, you know, the next couple of weeks, if you need it, to give me additional names. So that, that's just kind of an early preview of my, my main takeaway after the meeting is some type of contact list on this, and then to prime the pump for whatever input you might have later in the weekend and into next week. Make sense? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so that's the, that's the end goal, but for, for Dave's purposes as well, just a little reminder for folks, that the goal of the Housing Action Plan is funded through House Bill 1923, which was legislative appropriation, or it was for based attention on housing across our state. This was one of those rare items that had a little bit of money attached to it, so most cities are, have either completed or are in the process of conducting a housing plan for their specific housing needs in their community. So our goal is to assess Tenino's housing needs, to engage the public through both an in-person and an online engagement process to develop a strategy to address housing needs for the citizens of Tenino, and then finally to prepare a Housing Action Plan that is consistent with the housing element of the, of the comp plan and addresses the goals and policies. As a precursor to the grant, or as part of the, kind of the initial grant piece, we did that walking tour of several blocks of downtown and looked at vacant lots. Now, I see Jim Hirsch is here today, and he was with us on, on that, on that walkthrough, had a, a map that talked also about vacation of, potential vacation of alleys to try to improve the, or increase the size of the lots and, and maybe keep access going as well. So those were some of the, like, the early steps we did to try to make sure we are framing this correctly. The, the objective of the Housing Action Plan is those six items right there. This is kind of some of the statutory objectives, as well as what we've seen when we've done Housing Action Plans for other places in our region. So we're looking for strategies and recommendation for increasing the supply and the type of housing. Check the regs to see if there's any limitations or streamline that could occur to make things move a little faster through the process so that we meet the housing needs. Check and see if there's refinement that we can do to the code. Look through the data and determine if we see any, any trends or other items that kind of catch our eye that cause us to adjust the goals and policies in the comp plan. And then five and six especially are important, but five is, number five here is identify a schedule of programs and actions to implement the recommendations. So this is a Housing Action Plan, right? The idea is that we go through this effort funded by the state, and we come out the other end with things that we know will make the housing situation in Tenino better. And so those, those, you know, what we're looking for in that case is not only ideas, but ideas that have actions and actions that have champions, or actions that have advocates. If you don't have someone really pushing and helping keep these things at the top of mind, they slide. And people, you know, people got busy lives, and they, you know, all of you are volunteering as planning commissioners. You've got your own pesky day jobs and families, et cetera, et cetera. So we try to make sure that things that are important to the community have someone identified as kind of a, a point of contact and a, and a champion or an advocate for each of those strategies. So to, to wrap up kind of the context setting, the expectations are, are that this plan has two main parts. So what we're going to do right now is this housing needs assessment, which is a trend line and an evaluation of the data. How many houses do we have? How old are they? What is their average size? Average number of rooms? We can get all that information through the American Community Service at the Census, as well as Office of Financial Management and a couple of other spots, and then we can map it. We'll use a GIS mapping tool, we start looking at that, and then what we do is we check them to see if there's density in, in places that we wouldn't expect, or if there are housing types in places that maybe the underlying zoning isn't quite consistent, right? And those are all opportunities to improve the, the regulatory kind of network. If you've got a house or a duplex that's in a parcel in a zone that isn't, isn't conforming, they have a hard time making improvements to those places. You, you can, you can make some additions, but you can't short plod and add another unit if you're in a lot that, on a zone that doesn't allow, and I know, I know everyone understands that part. So first part, housing needs assessment, the data, is a data push, right, to try to understand what's, what we see. The next piece, the Housing Action Plan, is to look at the data, hear from the, the community, and figure out if there's code and policy changes that need to be made. It's really a two, a two-part deal. And I can, I'll talk about where, how we start to schedule those out here in this upcoming task, but those are primarily the context setting from, you know, from the background of the, of the grant. Any questions on that part? Okay. So one thing we're going to start doing is populating the guiding principles and evaluating the, the values and the needs and the issues. And so we've got a survey tool that we use to do that. And I know it's a bit abstract. I know guiding principles is a little bit of a squishy thing, but I would presume, and, and so, and maybe looking for input here, that we want to preserve some type of affordability in the community. We don't want to gentrify or, or limit supply to the point where things get prohibitively expensive for the people who already live in Tenino, right? That's a guiding principle. Is that a fair stepping into, you know, like, assumption?
I think so.
Yep, it is on my part.
What about, what about retention of existing high-quality, single-family homes? That's, I would guess that's, that's probably some, something like that is probably a guiding principle. Don't lose the good stuff we have, the good quality construction. We don't want to have a bunch of teardowns in order to accommodate some higher density, just, just for density's sake. It has to be context-sensitive, right?
Agreed.
And has to be in the right, has to be in the right place. What about, what about accommodating a bunch of density using large apartment complexes?
Again, it would have to be the right place, the situation, right, to, to properly accommodate both the housing need and the look, feel, and town, you know, city that we're trying to create.
Yeah, my only comment on that, I guess, maybe large is relative to the size of our city. I mean, I see some large apartment complexes in Lacey that I probably wouldn't want here, but, yeah, if we make that in context to the side, in context to the size of the city, I think we have to include that, and we're going to try to make affordable housing.
Agreed.
Exactly. How about infill? What's a guiding principle on infill?
Mine would be something along the lines of allowing, well, I don't know how to, how to word it, but one of the things I see in Tenino are ways that we can maybe make some more affordable housing is, we have a lot of large, very large lots with a single-family home on them, and making it as easy and affordable as possible for people to break up some of those, are, now, I don't know how to say it again, how to put additional housing on some of those lots where possible. And then, yeah, encouraging infill where possible.
Got it. Yep, that's, that's a common refrain. Others?
Well, I would say also maybe looking at how, what we define additional dwellings. Does that make sense? You know, if, if we think that an additional dwelling is a three-bedroom, two-bath, you know, standalone, or are there other things that we could do to maybe maximize space while still keeping the look and the feel?
To maximize use?
Yeah, there you go.
Mm-hmm. And again, with, with an eye towards the aesthetic and the contextual fit, right, within that particular block of thing?
Absolutely. And you know, that, that was one thing we kind of talked about during our, our walk through the city, is trying to develop guidelines, right, for infill projects. Like, are there certain things we want to point out that we want to see? Are there certain, you know, so I don't know, any, anything we can do like that as well to kind of maintain that look and feel that we're going for?
Any other kind of things we should be thinking about as we begin to evaluate the data and, and, and look at how Tenino wants to accommodate population moving into the future?
Yeah, I don't know if it fits into this exactly, but something I've been interested in, and I don't really know all the ins and outs of it, is the idea of inclusionary versus exclusionary zoning. Can we? I think exclusionary zoning is saying only a single-family dwellings can be put in this area versus make, in an inclusionary, it can be single-family, you may include some multifamily dwellings in the same zoning, or in the same zone. So that's kind of interesting, is how does that play into our housing and how we, you know, and I don't know if that fits in here, and I don't know enough about it to articulate it very well, but I just know that's something that I've read a little on.
Yeah, good example of that, Dave, is the single-family zone in the city of Tenino is an exclusionary zone. There are things that are allowed, but the only housing type that is allowed, the only residential type that's allowed is detached single-family residences. Other than ADUs, mother-law caretaker units, those are allowed almost throughout the city, but you can't, you can't have a duplex in a single-family zone. You can't have a triplex in a single-family zone.
And I'm sure there's pluses and minuses to both of those. And, so I don't, I, I think it's worth some discussion as we look at how we're going to achieve some of these housing things at some point. Like I said, I don't, don't know if that's appropriate for here, but someplace along the way.
Okay, good. Last, last call, last chance on, not the last chance, but any other ideas on, on guiding principles? Or values, needs, and issues?
So the only other thing that I would say is, I think, anything that we can do to try to build strong cores. And what I mean by that is, you know, how can we focus on our downtown core, the creative district, the historic district? What can we do to drive more, and not just business, but, you know, create an environment there that causes the people who are buying these infill, you know, to stay here within town? Does that make sense? So, I don't know, just whatever we can do to focus on kind of those downtown cores, which can, you know, bring that kind of vibe and look and feel and atmosphere.
Yep, that's related, absolutely. Yep, you're, you're, you're trying to bring density, retain walkability, and you want to walk somewhere. Otherwise, it's just exercise, right?
You're right. And we want the people who are coming with the density to want to be here, to want to interact here, want to spend their money here, want to relax here. You know what I'm saying? We want to keep them in as much as we can.
I've heard the commission say before that you, you want to grow but not lose Tenino's, like, small-town feel in the process.
Absolutely.
Still there?
Yep.
Okay. So this is good. Thanks for, thanks for that input. Obviously, there are comp plan policies and strategies already in your documents related to housing. So we'll bring those back at a later meeting, and, and what this does is just reinforces where we're headed, and helps me begin to put together the, the engagement tools, the survey outreach tools for the community.
Can I add one thing? Sorry.
Sure.
Sorry, you know, I'm just the first one, so I don't know if this has been talked about, but I think part of, and I don't know if this is a guiding principle or not, but when we look at all this, that we're going to bring in all these people, or looking at how to bring in additional housing, I think we have to do it in a way that maintains our ability to move around. So I don't want to be like Yelm where you can't drive through town because we've added all this housing, but we haven't dealt with any of the other things that go along with that. So I want to make sure, when we're looking at this, that we consider the impacts on our transportation and our streets, you know, and all that kind of stuff.
Makes sense.
Not bad talking Yelm either. Just every time I drive through there, I shake my head at the traffic.
Well, their, their issues aren't that dissimilar from what Tenino would face. State highway connection into a core urban area on Old Highway 99.
Basically, one way in and one way out practically.
Yeah.
Very limited ways in and out.
Right, train, train tracks that kind of force you a certain way. So some of them similar, for sure. Okay, so if anything pops into your head in the next couple of days or in the next week on either of those two items, guiding principles or your values, needs, and, and issues, feel free to shoot those to me. Don't, don't send them to the whole group. We don't want to violate OPMA. So just send them to me, and I'll make sure that Kalene gets a copy or Jen gets a copy, so it's recorded. But we, just as a reminder, we'll conduct that individually and then get together back again as a group at the next meeting. Okay, moving right along, stakeholders. Who should we be talking to as we kind of get smart on people outside of this virtual room, their opinions on housing? So I'm hoping for some names. I can find contacts, or if, you know, if you, if you have that handy, that's fine too, but just kind of shoot, start shooting me some ideas.
Homes First, I would say, maybe is one. They work a lot with lower-income people. Maybe they have some input.
Okay. Is that a Tenino-based organization or county-based?
That's county-based.
All right.
There's a South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity that does work in Yelm and Olympia now, but I could see them down here, for sure.
Good.
A good resource. I don't know, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, because I didn't know this was going to be talked about, but I think you could talk to TRPC. They might have a list of people that are involved in housing in the county. Or I could, or I could talk to them and get a list of people that they think, you know?
How about people? Everybody knows people.
Becky Stevens. Realtor and former planning commissioner.
Cheryl Pierce is the president of the chamber, and she's a Realtor as well. She owns a sandstone.
Is it Pierce, like, the county?
Yeah, I believe so.
Maybe the Thurston County, oh, you said the Thurston County Chamber. They have, may have some interest in how it affects businesses or things we can do to help business. Or Tenino Chamber, not Thurston County Chamber.
Aslan Mead is probably...
I'm surprised that guy's not here.
Yeah, I was going to say he's probably keeping tabs on things as we go anyway, but... You know what? Another one is if we could find a developer or a general contractor, I don't know if we could go through like the Master Builders Association, but if we had someone who was a developer down here, it might be nice to just figure out what are some of the hiccups, what are some of the hurdles, what are, you know, what are some things that could make it more lucrative for you to choose Tenino?
So a good idea. I put Doug Bloom, Rainier Development. He's done several of the more recent housing developments, including Hidden Meadows. He built those houses. Carl Taiji did the development, but Doug, Doug bought it and then built.
Yeah, Carl Taiji and Bob Bussi are both, were both involved with that Hidden Meadows, and they've done some other development around town, so they would probably make sense. If they're still in the game. What about the owners of like the sandstone apartments? I think they're remote owners, but there might be some local contact. It's really kind of like the most traditional sort of multifamily that we have, I think. I don't know.
How about, how about successful Realtors, people who've been in the community a long time to go to? Who's the go-to Realtors in town?
Thank you.
We got those under the residents, I think.
Yeah.
I think there's probably some other ones.
You could try Connor Steakland. He's a local kid. I mean, he's younger, but he's well-connected.
Perfect. Who else has a stake in housing in, in, in Tenino?
I don't know.
I was just going to say maybe the owners of the mobile home park behind Dave's.
That's off of 99?
Uh, yeah. There's that entrance off 507 too, I think.
What's the, that's got a name getting away from me right now. That's all right.
It's Tenino Estates.
Yep.
And then the other one I just thought about was maybe we could reach out to the school district. I mean, even if we could talk to the superintendent or maybe a principal, I mean, I know it's, it's district-wide, but they might also be able to let us know some of the hurdles that they're seeing with their students and youth dealing with housing.
I don't know if it's necessarily for this, but maybe local credit unions or banks that do new construction loans, since not all do that.
It's a good idea.
Which, what's a good one? What's one that people would recommend?
Oh, I know one is Only Fed. I think Only Fed does new construction loans, but I'm not sure about other local banks.
Maybe Timberland Bank.
An OB's here in town, but I don't know if they do.
Is there a Timberland branch in town?
No. Sorry, go ahead.
Isn't there only Only Fed and OB? Aren't those the two?
I don't think we have Only Fed in town, do we?
There's only OB in town?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just OB.
As far as a physical location in town.
The city does do business with Timberland and they do have a drop here in Tenino.
Ooh, good to know.
There's some former Tenino Chamber members that are loan officers for Timberland Bank too that I know.
What about any of the typical service clubs, Moose, Lion, Eagles? Any of those have a, like a strong player in kind of civic Tenino?
I mean, the Lions probably is the most active in the community, I would say, but we also have the Eagles. Lions Club, yeah. What about, what about the group that's going to build the townhomes across from Parkside on Stage and Central? They're not, they haven't been developed yet, but that's going to happen, right?
Yeah, so that's.
Larry Johnson.
I'm also not sure about this, but I'm thinking about if more families come, having activities and places for children to go, like boys and girls clubs. I don't know if there's already something like that in town or if it would be worth thinking about.
Tenino, Tenino does have a Boys and Girls Club.
Isn't Jason Lawton the connection? Our council member, Jason Lawton, I believe he's the Boys and Girls Club rep down here, maybe?
Anybody? Dave, is that true?
And also I think Be That, that's the group that kind of is Tenino, Yucote. They're active and they may have some thoughts on housing and what happens around that. They've worked with the schools and I don't know who the leader of it is though. I'm sure the, somebody at the city could find out who to contact. I think Jason Lawton's part of that also.
And another one, I don't know if it's worth mentioning here or not, but maybe like public transportation. I don't think that's probably necessarily for us or what the issue is, but I imagine, you know, if we want people here having public transportation to other cities might be of value.
Yes.
Then rural transit is not the name.
Yep.
Yep.
I think so, yeah.
My other ones would be, and I don't have a specific name, groups that represent underserved people in communities and homelessness. But I'll have to find some names. There's got to be a county with all the county work that goes on. There's got to be a group that does, they work with in those.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
There is Jody's. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just to add to that, like accessibility issues as well. But I don't have a specific group in mind either.
I was going to say Jody Stoltz with the Tenino Community Service Center and Food Bank.
Perfect. Well, this has been, this has been helpful for me. I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time to do that. It's a, it's a lot more effective to just crank through it in a setting like this for 15 minutes than it would be to call you up individually or even send an email out. So if you have anything else, let me know. I'll probably just send this back out to, to the planning commission afterwards. So you can see what we're, what we've written down already and get it back to me if there's additional input. So we came up, we came up a little short on local religious groups, but there, you know, there may be other groups as well that are just not listed thematically, so feel free to add those too. What's going to happen is with, with all those people, we may do a few targeted interviews. Like I'd probably reach out and have a one-on-one conversation with Becky, right? And I might have a conversation with the Master Builders rep or, or Larry or, you know, Doug or something like that. And, you know, I might pick and choose a one-on-one, but generally, we're going to ask these people to help get this survey out to their folks, to people who they represent. And that way we'll get a nice, big, robust response to the housing survey that's going out to people. And, and questions on that is what, what you would expect to see on a, on a housing survey, you know? Do you like where you live? Do you wish you lived somewhere bigger? You know, how much do you typically spend? What percentage of your income do you spend on housing and utilities? All those types of fun things.
I would definitely send it through Cheryl Pierce too. She's a, she's a Realtor with John Scott or whatever. And in addition to being the chamber president, and she can filter it down through the chamber businesses and all that good stuff too, so.
Great. All right, so upcoming tasks, or tasks by the next meeting, I'll have a public engagement plan to share with you kind of how we expect to do the outreach. How often and when we're going to tap planning commission. Right now, the plan is to rely fairly heavily on this group of people. Because we already, there's, there's not a ton of other taps on this time, so I can use this time for, you know, for some of those reasons to work through some of the engagement input and data collection stuff that we have to do. I want to run that past you when we get it and just kind of gut check some of that stuff.
I like it.
And in the March meeting, we'll out, we'll share with you what types of things we're going to be looking at on the local, regional and national data trends for inventory forecasting capacity. You can see that there. There's about six different items we'd be looking at. It's similar to what we do in a comp plan process with that population growth. You remember about a year ago, TRPC gave us a presentation on the buildable land capacity analysis. It'll use a lot of that. No, no real magic there. I'll grab some of the stuff, the good work that they did. And we'll, we'll see how well it's adapted for Tenino's purposes for the housing plan. So then that's to come. So I think we'll probably run that data trend effort through the rest of the spring. It'll probably be about a three or four month data crunch. And I, and we may need to bring in a, an economist that I work with to give us some of the chunkier numbers and work through some of the data that's maybe less accessible for, for us. So back to the two parts, right? The housing needs assessment, housing action plan. The first part, the first stage, six to seven months is going to be that needs assessment. And then the rest of the time, next eight months or so will be on the housing action plan. Any questions about anything we've talked about today during the kickoff discussion? Anything from the public? Any questions I can answer on, on this? Okay.
I think Seth was hoping to see maps of the walking tour maybe or something like to that effect, but if you have those. I know we talked about them last time, but.
I'm still trying to put those up. I'm tapping my capacity a little bit, but I think I'm going to get there. Spinning.
So you're going to send this around here? Go ahead. It's not coming up?
I was just going to say the map, the map will come up here in a minute if we, if we want to talk about what, what, I'm not sure what in particular we should look at on the map, but.
Okay.
I'll make it available.
Sure. Seth, do you have a specific question that you would like us to discuss? Kind of at the end of the meeting here a bit?
Uh, nothing in particular at this point. I, I, there's been, there's a property next to my house that has been vacant. It's been a right of way for the last 30 some odd years and my, my dad had tried to, at one point wanted to purchase it, but the city said it was a right of way. They may want to put a road there, but nothing's been done with it. So I'm kind of hoping to progress that and try to get that vacated if possible.
Just in time. It's like DHL or whatever. FedEx, I guess FedEx, right? FedEx Just in Time, something is. Planners are just in time. Okay, so to recap, I think it's October, towards the end of October. We started, we started here in this parking lot across from the school. We walked generally west, down along Central till we got to Ritter, popped up on Ritter across Sussex, all the way up to Lincoln and then all the way down Lincoln. And they came down Ragless, made our way around on this portion of Central again, and then came around the backside and back to where we started. There is a number of alleys in here, all the way on the block between Lincoln and Sussex. There were, there's fully used alleys that are not blocked and sometimes used for loading and unloading into a garage, sometimes for businesses. There's another set of alleys on the south side of Sussex, between Sussex and Central. These ones are mostly available until you get down to this section between Howard and Ritter and it gets a little tight in here. I think there's a container or a garbage, a garbage dumpster that was blocking the way right there. But those two were, were generally intact. The ones a little, a little bit off. I think we took a little side trip down one of these. And you look down the alleys between Garfield and Lincoln and it gets, there's a lot more things blocking it. There's garages or sheds in the alley, there's fences. It gets, it gets a little bit more challenging. And then same thing on the south side here between Central and Park. There's, there's a couple here you can see have been vacated. This block's been vacated completely, so is this one. And same thing on this side, so. Generally, the, in, the consensus from the, from the planning commission during the walk and then maybe immediately thereafter when we reviewed it was that, that no alley vacation was warranted on this block between Lincoln and Sussex. That was all being used kind of the way alleys were expected to be used. And same thing on the bulk of this other side. Opportunities for vacation. I have to grab that map if anyone remembers off the top of their head. I think perhaps this one, I think where this, I don't know if you can see my pointer or not, but this block between Custer and Ragless and Central and Sussex, there was, there was an opportunity perhaps there. Same thing here. This would make sense. These, these five parcels are vacant right now, as you recall, and the one that's across from the new gas station. You know, there's a big oak tree, huge madrona, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yep.
We saw that monster madrona. That there, that's probably ripe for, for vacating that alley. I don't, I don't see why that would need to be there, but. So that was, that was kind of the, the gist of it. I can keep looking for the specific alley vacation, the one that gets us at the other options.
We talked about the one on the block south of the library across Central as well, that multifamily zone. There's like a really narrow alley with a lot of fence encroachment right now.
Let's see if I caused this screen sharing. Probably did.
There's also a roadway that goes through the Parkside lot that we talked about a little bit, but.
There it is. It's going to be big. It's like six and a half mags. I could try it. See what that is. Was there, was there any other comments or questions that I can answer on the walking tour and the alley vacation?
I don't have any questions. Seth, do you want to get more specific?
Yeah, I was just curious because that obviously doesn't cover the entirety of, of the city. Is there going to be more? Because obviously I, I'm here for a vested interest in, in my particular property and that map did not cover it. So I was just curious if there's more plant in the future.
What do you think, Dan?
I, I don't know that we, yeah, I don't know that we had proposed to do another assessment of, of alleys. I felt like that walking tour was related to the housing plan due to, you know, that some of the vacant parcels that were pretty close and within walking distance of the downtown core. And those are the spots where it made the most sense to evaluate whether alleys would help, you know, increaseify or increase density or hinder it, you know, whether that additional access like on James's property, that alleyway allows him to, you know, jump in off the backside and maybe front load the structures up against the street a little bit without having a big parking area right on the street front. So there's, there, there might, in those cases, the alleyway is serving a pretty important, you know, use, especially if other properties along that block are already using the alley in the way. using the alley in the way it's intended. I think the opportunity for vacation in other parts of the city is, is wide open and is a, is a case-by-case basis, and the city has a statute that, you know, it, part of its municipal code relates to vacation of alleys and how that works.
Yeah.
I'm still waiting to come up, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, and the reason why I'm, I'm kinda here is because I was actually pointed in your guys' direction about my particular property by the mayor and Councilman Lawton. So that's why I'm kinda trying to, because I, I've not been able to get any, a response on, about the process and, and what, and how that's gonna work, because the municipal code is municipal code. It's a bunch of, it is municipal code language. I'm a layman, so, so that's why I'm here. So, but I can, I can follow up with Councilman Lawton, and Dan, I've left you a couple voicemails as well, so.
Will, do you wanna wait and look at that map to see if we can see it on the alley map and have a discussion about whether, in, in general, that the Planning.
Yeah, definitely.
Are you still there, Dan?
Commission would support a proposal for an alley vacation?
I mean, if that's the appropriate way to go about it.
I feel like I'm here.
Kind of like delayed a little bit. What's the best route for this? I mean, just you and Seth having a discussion, you know, outside of this meeting? Or still waiting for the map to load?
Is it like partially loaded, right?
Yeah, it's partially loaded.
It's like, it's just like the old dial-up days when you get like a line at a time. Does anyone else remember that?
Yeah, you get all excited, like, oh, it's gonna work. No.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Seth, we need to be on Park and where?
Uh, it is east of Park and Bogner.
Yeah, over here.
It's the, yeah, it's the Marion, the Marion Street, or Marion Court lot that's right between Park and Central.
Alright, Will. I'm game for, if you give me another minute or so, I'll pull up the geodata. We can take a look at it, and we'll just talk through it right now. And if, if there's general support from, you know, if you could say, hey, this looks like about the type of thing we would evaluate and consider, then that'll, I think that'll give us enough room to move forward with the process. If you, if, I think if the Planning Commission says, hey, that, that doesn't fit a potential vision, then that's feedback. I think he can still, you know, Seth can still do what he, what he would, you know, wants to do. If you, if you wanna prepare an application, it's ultimately the City Council's call.
Yeah. Anything I can do to help progress even just a decision on it and kind of understand the reason would be great.
Is this the lot adjacent to the Heritage Baptist Church lot? Is that what this one is?
Hmm, no.
No, no. I'll just wait.
Getting close here. Starting to figure this go-to-meeting thing out. Alright, does everyone see the aerial map now?
Yes.
Yep.
And which one are you? Get the roads on. Alright, so here's Bogner, here's Park.
Yeah, so right over to the east, the Marion, Marion Street. That, that lot right there is, it's, it's not maintained. It's just a lot. There's no road. I don't see a purpose for a road being there.
So on the south side of Park, if that's what you're talking about?
Uh, I am.
Is it like the trampoline or the swimming pool lot, this guy?
Uh, no, it, it is, um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out exactly where I'm looking at. Hold on one second. Uh, right, yeah, right, right there where the, there's a little red, there's a red car to the right there. Yeah, where that, that area right there.
Talking about a strip of land between there. There's a narrow strip that goes, says Marion Street. It's a
Yep.
basically between that house and the lot next to it.
Yeah, so that looks like actual right of way, not even an alley.
That's like a road, right?
Right. See Marion kicks through here and would connect all the way up, up a bit.
That's kind of a hard sell for me, I would think, just because it's, I mean, it seems like a viable, what would be a viable road. It's not been developed, but if that large lot were broken into smaller houses, it would be viable.
Is Bogner going all the way through, or is that a private driveway?
Uh, Bogner goes all the way, all the way through from Sussex up to East Washington.
Got it. The county's got new aerials. They're probably like a couple of months old, so there's, there's a lot of tail in here.
I think they're from 2020, actually.
Right. I think they're new uploads, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, totally.
Alright, so that's, that's their request. The request is for consideration of the Marion Street segment between Central and Park.
I mean, it's curious, looking at this map, if you look to the, I don't know, I'm a little bit confused on directions. There's got Silverton or Silver something just to the, on my screen to the right of it. It's like it's another street that's there that looks like there's a houses right in the middle of it, so. I mean, I think it's worth taking a look at. I mean, to see what is the benefit of having that street and what would it, what purpose would it serve? There's.
Yeah, and that, and that Silver, that Silver Street one was granted probably about ten, fifteen years ago.
That was.
Was vacated, and yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think we have one, my house too, this, an alley, but it's, it has a name on Google Maps, but there's no road there, so. I, I'm willing to look at any of them if, there's a good reason, I think, I need more knowledge about what purpose it serves. But I'm willing to look at all of them, just like the alleys. I think we should look at all of them.
Sure.
If questions come up.
That's all I can ask for.
I mean, when, kind of when I, when I'm thinking of the reasons for vacating something, I'm, I'm thinking about areas that are likely to never be used, you know? I mean, we're never gonna develop it. I would have, I don't know, it's hard to say that that would never be used there. To me, I mean, that one lot, the lot to the west is a whole block of itself, and if that were split up, I mean, those would be.
The current, current resident will definitely not, not consider that. I know that for sure. And then that, the Marion, the Marion Street area, I mean, like I said, my, my family's lived in this, I lived on this property for thirty plus years, and they were told thirty years ago that they wanted to build a road on it, but nothing's happened. Obviously, the, the neighbors on the central side are utilizing part of it. You know, and actually even maintaining it, but like my, my particular lot, that, that one next to my house is not maintained at all, and junk gets thrown in it all the time and, and everything. So I would love to extend my property if it's possible. That's all.
Alright, well, we could, let's talk about it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
So I, would the, would, if, if, if the City Public Correspondent, if Troy Cannon said, hey, we, we do have plans. It's in our tip to put a road on that, then that would be a substantive discussion item about whether that's something that the city should pursue. Absent that, if it's not on a twenty-year plan to pave, are there other, other factors that would have a bearing on whether you would, you know, conceptually recommend vacation of the right of way? So other than roads, you said, hey, I don't wanna use something that's gonna need to get built on, right? That, that we're gonna need for access for future development. Are there other, other factors? I mean, if there's a water line running down the middle of there, that's a, a bad idea to. Right, so infrastructure. Or another type of easement.
I think Public Works would be a good place just to say, hey, what, what's here and what's, you know? In your opinion, what, what purpose does it serve? Because I think they have a better, bigger picture of, you know, water sewer lines and all those kind of things.
Okay, well, let's start there.
Good. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
We'll start with Troy. We'll see what he has to say. If he has nothing in, in the, in the, you know, in the way on Marion Street, there are no plans, then we'll come back with, with kind of a proposal, if it even needs to come to the Planning Commission. I'm not, I'm not sure what the mayor, if the mayor would prefer the Planning Commission kind of weigh in on a street vacation, or whether they're just gonna do it at council level. But. I think, I think everyone raised good points.
Yep, makes sense to me.
I appreciate it. Thank you for hearing me out.
Sure. Thanks, Seth. Okay, any more comments on vacations? Alright, so I think that's the end of the agenda. Dan, just to recap, you want us to, you're gonna send around the documents related to the Housing Action Plan that we went over tonight, and what we should all consider as homework. Maybe making some additions to that and sending them to you directly. Does that sound right?
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, well, does anyone have anything else? No? Any announcements? Alright, with that then, I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
I have a question for you, Will, if you wanna hang tight for a sec.
Sure.